Good evening, welcome to the July 17, 2018 Board of Commissioners' Milage and Budget Hearing. This is the second specially called public hearing. First to discuss the proposed property tax increase as defined by Georgia law, and the second to conduct public hearing, the second public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. So, just to go over the ground rules, we're going to discuss the first public hearing that I'll call will be on the proposed property tax increase. Unlimited number of speakers, each get three minutes. Just want you to see if you, if you talk about the budget during your, during this time, it's supposed to be addressed to tax, I'm going to allow you the latitude to do that. You're using your own time to address something now that you could be more property addressing at the budget part of the hearing, so, but it's your call, alright? So with that, and I'll call, and I'll call the first public hearing, sorry, the second public hearing on the 2018 proposed property tax increase as defined by Georgia, Georgia law. And I declare, I declare this public hearing open, and just come up here, please introduce yourself. Mr. Volkan will be here tonight to answer any specific questions about the budget or the, the taxes for, for your information for ours. So with that, just whoever comes up, just please, if you have the, whoever comes in behind them, please keep your seat so that the person in front of you can, behind you can see the speaker and the board. With that, please. And also, if you let you know who, what your name is and where you live, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Here's five copies for each of you. Good evening, I'm Alicia Adams, and I am with Americans for Prosperity. I'm going to amend the public statement that I made last time, but I wanted to go over it all since this is Commissioner Ott's first time to hear it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today on these issues because they affect every taxpayer in our county. I am Alicia Adams. I am a proud 14-year homeowner and resident of Cobb County. Today, I am here on behalf of the Georgia chapter of Americans for Prosperity's 80,000 activists, many of whom are here with us tonight. They're from Cobb County, and they are here with me to urge you to reject the 1.7-mill property tax increase included in the 2019 budget. The proposed property tax hike would cost Cobb County residents millions of dollars in additional property taxes next year. Americans for Prosperity understands the importance of property taxes to fund local projects such as roads and schools. However, the additional tax dollars being proposed would not be used for that purpose. The increase in the property tax would be an even harder pill to swallow when paired with the recent decision to increase Cobb County's water rates by 10%. The increase represents almost $16 million in new costs just for local homeowners and does not take into account the significant revenue increase that will also be generated by local businesses. The multitude of different avenues that the county is pursuing to increase funds is extremely disappointing considering the fact that Cobb County Board of Commissioners does not have a revenue problem, they have a spending problem. Rather than continue to look to taxpayers to bail us out of poor financial decisions, this commission, instead of threatening to close Cobb's parks, libraries, senior centers, and animal shelters, should look to rein in the out-of-control spending. Homeowners and all citizens of Cobb County have been taxed enough. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Judy Wiltshire, and I'm here as the 2018 President of the Cobb Association of Realtors. Our political affairs committee has taken the opportunity to attend six of the county town hall meetings and one of the opposition meetings. Having diligently studied this issue from both sides, our association agrees that a millage rate increase is necessary to maintain the quality of life and public safety of Cobb's citizens. However, we do not believe that a 1.7 millage rate increase is required. Instead, we respectfully encourage you to consider closer to 1.1 mills. We believe that there are a number of opportunities to reduce expenditures and to raise revenues. The first priority of government is always the safety and health of its citizens. Therefore, we fully support the increase in public safety expenditures. Library services could be consolidated to reduce the number of open hours while still providing service needed in all districts. Offering the meeting areas and county libraries for rent to the public for fees could generate revenue to help offset the cost of taxpayers to run the library system. Our parks and senior centers are a big part of the quality of life in Cobb County, and none of us want to see them closed. Reevaluation of the participation fees paid to the county for team sports could provide money to offset that cost. We would also encourage promoting public groups such as the Kiwanis Rotary and others to be able to rent space in the senior centers to help offset the cost of those services. The primary function of the Safety Village is education, and therefore, we believe it should be run by the Board of Education, the FIRE Fund, or a joint venture of the two. Many of the buses that are running are running near empty, and it appears you could reduce the fleet of large buses by using smaller ones and at lower costs. It also has been suggested that some of the routes be cut and the runs per route be reduced, and possibly on some of the less-traveled routes even provide an Uber voucher system. The number of county employees could be reduced by 5% over the next three years through attrition. Most responsible corporations and public entities have adopted a use-it-or-lose-it policy for unused vacation and sick days, and we feel that the county should do the same. We firmly believe that it is not fair-
Excuse me ma'am, excuse me, your time's up.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Fran Cameron, and I am a resident of Cobb County in District Two. I think all of us want our citizens to be able to live their best lives, developing healthy bodies and healthy minds. Our parks and the programs in the parks help our children and all our cities with healthy bodies. I like, I love to walk in East Cobb Park because I love to see all the activities going on there. You'll see kids playing frisbee, football, soccer, playing on the swings, bike riding, playing instruments, watching the bugs, learning about worms and caterpillars, all enjoyed in that park. So I definitely support the parks, and if anything, would like to see the people who used to, the people who were laid off that took care of the parks that increased again. I visit the East Cobb Library frequently. There are always people reading, picking out books, using the computers. I happen to enjoy the book club there. In fact, I met three of my closest friends there. At all ages, we keep learning. Books, tablets, videos, and discussions help us to learn and to have healthy minds. So I strongly support the libraries and would encourage increase there. The collections at the libraries really need updating. My mother-in-law is 96-years-old, and she has really enjoyed playing bridge at the East Cobb Senior Center. I'm always amazed at all the activities that go on there that are being enjoyed. I strongly support the senior centers without yearly fees. Our police officers help to keep our citizens safe, and I appreciate all they do, but they can't do it without quality equipment, good patrol cars, video cams, computers, and good training. So I support our police. I also support being fiscally responsible and not wasteful. While I hope our commissioners continue to look for ways to save, it appears to me that a raise in the millage rate is needed. My husband and I support it. We believe that protecting our bond rating is important and fear losing it. So commissioners, I hope that you will vote to raise the millage rate to the benefit of all of our citizens. I support the parks, the libraries, the senior centers, the police. If anything, I'd like to see those areas benefit and expand. Please vote for the millage rate increase. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jan Barton, I live in Marietta. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no to the proposed millage increase. To our friends with the libraries, parks, senior centers, we say that your services are not in danger, and with good management will not be in the future. You have been deceived, there is enough money. We are all in this together. I am standing up for people who cannot afford more taxes and standing up for good management of citizens' tax dollars. The more excess money given to politicians, the more they will spend. Moody's downgraded Cobb's outlook to negative although we kept our AAA rating for now because of poor policies of how the budget and the millage are being handled. Now the commissioners want to increase that burden on struggling families that have to live within their means. The county should also. Families will be devastated by the property increase, school tax increase, proposed millage rate increase, and the water rate increase. Bob Weatherford has also proposed an extra sales tax. Real people have told us how the tax will hurt. Chairman blames homestead exemption for budget woes. Not every property qualifies for an exemption. A gentleman we spoke with the other day, a retired vet, invested in rental properties and has not been able to sustain a living looking at the new taxes. What about the widows and seniors on fixed incomes, or disabled military veterans, or single parents struggling on one salary? Give up synthetic turf, more sidewalks to nowhere, and deceptive tent cities that attract Atlanta's homeless populations keep our taxes low. Groups of us have pointed out the excess funds in the older 2005 and 2011 SPOLOST, $106 million. Other counties used excess SPOLOST funds to pay down debt avoiding any tax increase. We have asked the commissioners to do the same here. In all my decades in Cobb County, I have never witnessed such underhanded shenanigans and disrespectful treatment of citizens. It is not a good thing when officials selectively avoid answering questions from their constituents with differing viewpoints. That goes against open meetings, the Georgia Constitution, and the US Constitution. It is a violation of our First Amendment rights of free speech, and that is the kind of behavior exhibited by banana republics under dictators. I am asking for an independent outside forensic audit and for a no vote on this unnecessary 34% millage increase. We still do not have an accurate budget posted for taxpayers to view, so I will not be talking about the 2019 budget, and commissioners should not vote on a blank check. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Rachel Slomavitz, and I stand here on behalf of the 6,000 voices of the combined change on our petition and two respective Facebook pages. 6,000 voices. I want to thank the commissioners for their commitment to the libraries and for restoring our lost hours. I was returning a book last week to East Cobb Library on Thursday morning around 10:00 AM. I knew the library wasn't open due to reduced hours, but others did not. As I was waiting for the person in front of me to drop off their books in the drop box, I witnessed what looked like a grandma with two young teens head up to the door. The grandma pulls at the door, struggles with it for a little while, and then seeing it wasn't open, she peers through the glass doors only to see that it is closed. Wondering why it's not open, she looks at the hours posted. She doesn't know what to do. This was her planned activity, but now they have left. Will they return to the library? Don't know. And while she might have been in disbelief that the library was shut at 10:00 AM on a weekday, all I saw was a missed opportunity by three. When you go to the library, you're committing yourself to be open about learning. These two young teens might have been working on summer reading, the grandmother might have been looking forward to reading a key article about something important to her. This is the utopian vision of Cobb. This is the current vision of Cobb that we have. We all have well-educated, well-informed, in-touch neighbors. Let's make our libraries comfortable, safe, up-to-date, well-staffed, easily accessible, and restore our lost hours. We encourage you to vote yes on the proposed millage rate increase. Having spoken to many of the commissioners over the last several months, I appreciate and see the dedication that you have towards our library. We thank you for that. We also thank the commissioners of the past who knew that the libraries were important to their citizens as well. Now let's secure it for our children of today and for the children of tomorrow. Let's not have any more missed opportunities like that grandmother and those teens. They are so critical, and they are so important. The 6,000 voices of Save Cobb Libraries, thank you for your commitment to the libraries. Please say yes on the proposed millage rate increase. Thank you.
My name is Thea Powell, and I've been a Cobb County resident for 36 years. At last year's town hall meeting, we had to watch a video with boxes in a bucket making us feel like children who needed to be entertained. At least we were able to jot down the expenditures for each department. However, this year, the town hall could be best described as a dog's breakfast. That is a British term meaning a confused mess or mixture. My comments will be related to specific PowerPoint slides from the July 9th Town Hall. Slide 7, graph of Cobb's millage rate from 1990 to 2017. The highest millage increase of 1.51 was for 2011 as a result of the recession. Now we are being told 1.7 is the magic number despite the anticipated growth in the Tax Digest. Two articles in the July 13th MDJ noted that both the Cobb County School District and the City of Smyrna projected a 9% increase in the Tax Digest and would not increase their millage. Are we not all working off the same revenue stream? Slide 33, unexpected expenses since the 2014 warning of shortfalls. List stadium debt, stadium capital maintenance, and stadium police totaling $8.67 million. Braves deal was consummated in 2013, not an unexpected expense. $28.22 million in HR costs, increase in healthcare and pension costs, pay-in-class personnel costs, police sheriff pay differential, all had to be approved by the BOC, not an unexpected expense. Slide 28, much was made of the impact of the floating homestead exemption which saved taxpayers $23 million in FY 2017. That exemption has been in place and dealt with every fiscal year. However, a question was asked about the impact of tax abatements, and the chairman responded by saying that he had just found out that it totaled $300 million and something should be done. Unfortunately, there was not a tax abatement slide on that lost revenue. What was never mentioned at the town hall is that the proposed 1.7 millage rate is for this past year's expenditures. We were shown a budget last year, but apparently the BOC spent more money than they had, and now the citizens have to make up the difference. Will this happen again next year, and will we all be back opposing another millage increase? The town hall PowerPoint is titled Cobb's Budget Journey: How We Got Here. I propose to retitle it Cobb's Budget Journey: How You Brought Us Here.
And tonight, I'm going to talk about the millage rate, and there might be a little combination for the budget, because that was very confusing in all the town hall meetings. Unless you're in the know, I don't think anybody knew. Can you pull it up? Okay. I don't think anybody really knew that 1.7 millage increase was to pay for 2018 budget, money that we'd already spent. I think everyone thought that the 2018 millage increase was going to pay for all the things that people wanted. With that said, I will congratulate the chairman and staff on having a wonderful campaign strategy to get the millage increase. There were threats to cut our services if we didn't agree to the millage increase. We were going to cut parks, libraries, recreation, senior services, extension services, our islands wouldn't be mowed, et cetera, et cetera. And that was all for a 1.7 millage increase to keep our county a five-star county. And so I ask you commissioners, and you, the people in the audience, are you willing to prepay your credit card $47 million for what you're going to get next year? Because that's what you're doing. Let's just take a look at the graph. The Digest in 18 at 6.76 will bring in $211 million in revenue. At 8.46, $264.7 million in revenue. If you were to balance the budget with the millage, you would only need 6.99 or .23 mills. That's it. It would give you a little overage of a few thousand dollars, but that's what's needed, And talking to all the supporters, and I totally get people being passionate about their own projects. I too have my own special projects that I didn't want to see disappear. Animal control, libraries, parks, we all love those. But I'm not a one-issue voter. I'm not willing to pay 1.7 mills more in my taxes to keep a library, in hopes that I might be able to keep the parks, extension services, senior services. For all the one-issue voters, this is what you got in the 2019 budget. Are you impressed? Animal control got $219,000.
Excuse me, Ms. Fisher, your time's up.
That's too bad. Thank you.
My name is Larry Long, and I live in Northeast Cobb in the Mountain View community. And first, I want to tell you thank you for your time and your services. We really appreciate all the things that you've done for the county, whether the millage rate passes or not. Thank you for your time and services. I'm for the increase in the millage rate, because I firmly believe that what we've, what we have come up against is a, is a perfect storm of revenue versus expenses. We've had two or three actual property tax cuts in the last eight to 10 years. Then we had the Braves Stadium, which I'm sure a lot of us probably wouldn't have voted for had, had we had a choice, but that's a done deal. We've got it, we got to pay for it. Also believe that Cobb County is the best county in Georgia. We're privileged to live here. And we got that way because we've, we've been, we've been smart, we've, we've invested our tax dollars wisely, we've, we've built some, some wonderful roads and streets and parks and schools and recreational facilities. I don't want to see us go backwards. The, the millage rate increase is an investment in our future. It's going to take the county forward. We, we need this money to continue to make Cobb County the best county in the state. And even with this millage rate increase, we will still have the lowest tax rate in the eight to 10-county metro area, okay? Specifically, I'm, I'm a master gardener, which is part of the Cobb County Extension And just the master gardeners alone, every year, we donate about half a million dollars in, in free labor for the county that goes into the, the betterment of the county. For example, we, we provide and sponsor vegetable gardens at every single elementary school in the county. That's just one of the many things that we do. But anyway, Cobb County is the best county in, in Georgia, and I hope we can continue to, to keep it that way. And the, the millage increase is an investment in our future, and, and I hope it passes. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Lance Lamerton, I live in Austell, and I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed millage rate increase. Advocates, advocates for the tax increase claim there is nothing to cut. I respectfully disagree. If I had three hours, I wouldn't have enough time to outline all the cuts and cost savings that could be realized. But since I only have three minutes, I'll just touch on a few and pick up on some, on the other ones next week. A million a year for safety, security, and traffic control at the Braves game? Isn't it time we stood up to the Braves and its owners and tell them they've already got more than enough from us? And, and there is nothing in our contract with them that requires that we pay for that. Tell them that if they want those services, they'll need to pay for it. Send them the bill. Five to $600,000 a year on the Flex Bus System. Although well-intentioned, the primary users of this service can easily afford Uber and Lyft to connect to the CCT. I know. I've written on it and have observed that its patrons are middle-class citizens living in single-family detached homes in middle-class neighborhoods. For those who can't afford Uber or Lyft, establish a means-tested voucher program that can be administered by the office already established for that purpose within CCT. A million a year in taxpayer contributions to charitable nonprofits. Really? Not only is the county, not only is the county in the business of picking winners and losers for these organizations, but it defeats the whole purpose and concept of voluntary support upon which they are founded. If I want to give to the Red Cross or whatever, that should be my choice, not yours. When it comes to libraries, wouldn't it be better allocation of resources to close the small branch libraries that have minimal traffic, such as the Sweetwater Valley Library in Austell, and use the savings realized to expand services in libraries with greater use without raising taxes to do it? This was the recommendation of the 2011 Citizens Oversight Committee. It's timely implemented it. And by the way, as far as that is concerned with the Citizens Oversight Committee, there's a treasure drawer of savings that could be realized if you all would just look at it. The county offers free football camps and free movie nights at Maple House Amphitheater. While terminating these programs won't be a big savings, how can you justify raising our taxes to continue them? This goes to the proper role of county government, and these don't fit the bill. Moreover, let's get out of the amphitheater business altogether. We bet we could save a bunch of money selling that facility off. The county spends close to $2 million a year operating a golf course. Why don't you sell it off to a private company that can make money on it rather than bleeding taxpayers, most of whom don't play the game and can afford it? Personnel costs are far and away the greatest area of savings, and next week, I'll look forward to sharing those with you. Thank you.
My name is David Miller, and I live in West Cobb. I'm a lifelong Cobb Countyan. I've lived in, on Burn Hickory Road for 45 years, and I've always considered that our county was one of the best-run counties in the state of Georgia, if not the nation, until recently. And that started with the secret Braves deal that the county commissioners made, and not all of you did it, but some of you did. The secret deal is why we're probably here tonight, because y'all are busy funding that and every other little gotcha project that the, that the Chamber of Commerce has up their sleeve to stick the voters for. And I'm just tired of it. And I pay my taxes and I run a small business, and I don't have the luxury of raising revenue 34% and telling my clients, "Oh, I'm going to raise your prices 34% to pay for something I want." Y'all should consider what the voters need and not what they, some of them might want for libraries or whatever. And I do use some of the services. I like parks, and I'm insulted when y'all just say, "Well, we're going to close a park to make y'all suffer." Y'all need to cut the budget. Look at your unfunded pension cost. You really want to tell the voter something? Tell them about the unfunded pension cost that we have that nobody's mentioned. If you really want to get down to where the rubber meets the road and what's going to cost us some money, that's it. Y'all need to change it to a 401K like every business in Cobb County has instead of a defined pension plan. And that would be my first way to cut the budget. So if you want to be serious, change the pension plan. So if you want to be serious, change the pension plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this evening. My name is Sarah Mitchell. I have a funny accent, as you can hear. I'm a Cobb County resident and a taxpayer since 1996. I became a U.S. citizen in 2008, and I wear my "I Voted in Georgia" with pride sticker. I am currently president of the Mountain View Arts Alliance, thank you, ma'am, and a small but mighty nonprofit attached to the Art Place Mountain View. We were formed in 1993 to fundraise to offer free outdoor concerts and scholarships to children wishing to attend the classes there for summer camps. We also provided items that were not budgeted by the county. Also, I was production director for Center Stage North Theater, the oldest Cobb County community theater in Cobb County. We were formed in 1974, which is a home of the Art Place Mountain View. Also, I was a director of theater products at the Maple House Amphitheater with the children there. And the last, I'm taking a break from directing down there. We did Shrek down there. We had 120 kids come and do that musical. And I had 120 tryouts, and I wish I'd been able to cast more of them. Anyway, for those of you who don't know here, the Art Place Mountain View houses a black box theater, is an outdoor theater space complex for concerts, galleries, classrooms. And we have a pottery studio, and we get wild on the wheel there. It gets rather dirty in there sometimes. Anyway, the theater is booked 50 weeks of the year, and our summer camps and classes are full with a waiting list for most of them this summer. 500,000 residents have walked through the doors since we opened. I don't have a time for presentation here now on the value of arts to a community and the positive effects for a functioning society. Quite happy to spend 12 hours giving you that lecture, but I won't today. However, in the recession years of 2010, the Art Place Mountain View was on the list to be closed. One of the adjustments made was to close on a Friday to save money. Moving forward to 2018, the facility still closed on a Friday. It makes it really hard to sell tickets to an event when you're closed. So imagine potentially our dismay when we open up our local newspaper, the Marietta Daily Journal, to read that the Art Place Mountain View is on the chopping block again. Imagine you're just about to head into summer with camps prepared, teachers booked, interns hired, deposits and purchases made for the outdoor concerts. You learn that through your local paper, you're about to lose your job, potentially. The article devalued what we do there as volunteers and staff there. Why would you even volunteer for something that you think is going to close, is constantly on the list for closure? This is not sustainable. The MVAA Board started a campaign to support Cobb Arts, and that includes the Maple House Amphitheater and the Art Place. I hope everyone has emailed you to tell you how valuable that the Art Place has been and that you are now aware that it is a great facility to have in Cobb County District III. Your answer to this has been to a lot of our folks is we have no intention or you have no knowledge of what this was happening.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time's up.
Thank you. I vote for the millage increase. Thank you.
My name is Chris Peters. I'm a resident of Cobb County since 1999, homeowner. I'm going to keep my remarks brief, hopefully. You've probably heard a lot of things, and I don't claim to be any kind of expert on the budget. I appreciate the dilemma you guys are in because I think it's a classic debate between do we cut services or do we raise taxes? And the thing that stands out in my mind is that it's a little bit of a red flag here is we shouldn't probably be having this debate right now. Typically, you don't talk about cutting services or raising taxes until after a recession. We're at the peak of the economic cycle. If you look at property tax revenues, stock market, most of your economic measures that people look at, and I remember the recession in 2009. I remember some of those libraries closing, and I remember the bus service. I remember there used to be a line that ran through East Cobb. I think it was the 65 that got cut and still hasn't been restored. But basically, what strikes me as potentially a problem here is that we're going to be having this debate again, or you're going to be having this debate in another two to three years, I predict, because I suspect that what's happened here is that the perfect storm that the other gentleman mentioned will happen again, and only this time it will be another really bad recession. And then we've already raised taxes in 2019 or 2018. Then we're going to have to raise them again in 2020, 2022. I think it would behoove us to look at some way to not raise taxes this year, and I think that would introduce a little bit of fiscal discipline that may be lacking here. So in summary, I'm against the millage rate increase at this time. And I do appreciate the job that all of you do and your service, and I know that I've talked to some of you one-on-one at times, so I really appreciate that you guys do have a hard decision to make. So thank you very much.
My name is Robin Meyer, and I live in Mableton, Georgia. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And I'm here to speak in favor of the millage rate increase of 1.7 mills. As you might have noticed, Mick doesn't take positions on budget matters very often, but this is an important issue at an important time, and we felt that we needed to speak up for our community. As we work with the county and with you all on a daily basis as volunteers, we're continually impressed at the dedication, the efficiency, and the professionalism of all of the staff. At the same time, we are dismayed at the lack of resources for some very, very important services, such as library hours, parks maintenance, roadside mowing, road repair, and the replacement of obsolete vehicles. Even with this millage rate increase, Cobb County taxes will still be lower than similarly situated counties such as Gwinnett. It seems incredulous to me personally that somehow or the other, those other counties, a county like Gwinnett is not being fiscally prudent as well. I think they probably are. I think that we have simply cut taxes in the past to the point that we find ourselves in this unsustainable situation. In Mableton and in many other areas of the county, we desperately need these basic services: libraries, parks, road maintenance, programs for seniors, and sufficient staffing and capital spending to carry out basic government services. We need them if we're going to compete with surrounding areas for residents and businesses. When those folks, those prospective residents and those new businesses drive into Mableton and into other unincorporated areas of the county, the difference is obvious. In Mableton, tall, uncut grass falls over the sidewalks and makes it hard to even walk down them. They certainly aren't pleasant to look at. In Smyrna, the areas around the sidewalk are manicured. In Mableton, tree branches with brown leaves from last year's storms lay along the side of the road, not in Marietta. In Mableton, our art center is dark on Fridays and on weekends, not in Fulton County. In Mableton, our library is closed on Sunday, not in Woodstock. I could go on and on, but I won't. You've got a whole room full of people to hear from, and so maybe I won't even use my whole three minutes. The bottom line is this: there's no such thing as a pre-lunch. We need to pay for the services we need. We think Cobb citizens get good value from their tax dollars. We are willing, because of your good track record, your generally good track record, to give you a little bit more tax money in return for more services. The actual cost is small in proportion to the impact of the services provided. So please approve this millage rate increase and put Cobb County back on a path to excellence.
I've lived here in Georgia almost 40 years. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Eric Afton, and I actually live in Cherokee County. I'm in the process of moving to Cobb County. I've done some research. I think the 1.7 millage rate is excessive. That's basically, I think that possibly a millage rate, well, somebody suggested 2.1%, I'm thinking 0.7%, but I just think it's way too much money. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
My name is Patty Reck, and I've been a resident of Cobb County in Mableton for 20 years, and I stand here in favor of the 1.7 millage increase, even as a single fixed-income retiree. I'm deeply grateful for the town hall meetings, having attended the event at South Cobb Community Center. Chairman Boyce's presentation was a straight shooter. Many of us purposely moved here. Excuse me.
You will, excuse me, you will be respectful. I mean that. That is really, really unbecoming of your group, and you know better than that. So I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. Many of us purposely moved here, having been told it was a promising area of growth, and we want that restored. Yet I'm somewhat perplexed that some residents do not understand the benefits of restoring the necessary level of services we've long done without or have still been provided with skeleton crews, even though three lower millage rates we've experienced in six years, to name a few: libraries, roadside mowing, road repairs, fleet upgrading, senior services, adopt-a-mile bag pickups, parks and recreation programs and services, with which I have a personal love for the Maple House Barnes Amphitheater and the art center. County extension services, public safety, including police, fire, 9/11, animal services, EMA, and who knew we had the Safety Village? I now understand more thoroughly the floating homestead exemption and am thankful to live in this county with one of the lowest tax rates in Georgia. And as an aside, let me give a shout-out to the town hall presentation of the Impact Calculator that is incredibly helpful and very clear. Additionally, I would like to thank Cobb County for the intensively creative financing over these last eight years, using the splas to its full potential. But time is nigh. A millage increase is simply a no-brainer. The increase in population has created a huge increase in service needs. I understand how reductions in funding equate to reduction of county workforce, thus decreasing our ability to serve the general residency. I'm also deeply concerned that we maintain our AAA rating in order to receive its benefits, especially in terms of receiving funding. This millage increase will be vital to proving to the deciding entities that we are acting responsibly to deserve the AAA. Lastly, I want to thank you for the honor of attending the inaugural Cobb 101 Citizens' Government Academy. Truly, this is one of the best things I've ever done in my lifetime, and I've done some real fine things in 71 years. The genuine passion for and love of our county was palpable from all of these employees. We are so fortunate to have these dedicated leaders and people who work for us. I've not stopped talking about this educational opportunity, and I continue to be a town crier for Cobb. And as I said at our final session of the 101, it also made me more informed and thus a better voter. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Laura Keefe, the Executive Director of YELLS, or Youth Empowerment Through Learning, Leading, and Serving. Thank you so much for the investment that you've made over the years in both YELLS and the people of Cobb County through your support of nonprofit organizations. I'd also like to share our support for the proposed budget. While it does include a tax increase, this increase will allow Cobb County to live its values and nurture a community we can be proud to be a part of. The support of nonprofits like YELLS is critical to the future prosperity of our county. Please know that your funding of nonprofits is not only a blessing, but an investment. This contribution is reinvested in the community as we empower Cobb County residents to overcome their challenges and give back to our community. More than just a youth education and leadership program, we engage the whole family and whole community, equipping youth and their parents to strive for success and serve others. Not only do the clients of nonprofits like YELLS pay it forward through service, but their success also spurs our economy as they attain and retain employment and spend the money they earn within Cobb County. Moreover, the Franklin Gateway community YELLS serves has seen a 40% decrease in crime since we began daily programs in 2011. Nonprofits solve problems and save the county time and money as we help families gain self-sufficiency so that they can contribute to their community. The nonprofits supported by the collaborative grant process are well-vetted, and the county's funds are carefully allocated and leveraged. Your investment has spurred federal, state, and local support. In fact, YELLS relies on Cobb County nonprofit funding to serve as a critical required match for a $109,000 federal grant. This is further stretched by the hundreds of volunteers donating thousands of hours each year. I can't even begin to capture the time, love, heart, energy, and so much that so many pour into our community each day and the gratitude we have for your belief in and contribution to this important work. We are so grateful for your support that has helped us grow and strengthen our community. Most importantly, we're proud to invest in a community that invests in its citizens. Thank you very much.
My name is Leroy Trey Hutchins, and I have been a resident of Cobb County for 35 years and proudly 30 of those years in South Cobb. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the South Cobb Alliance, which is a local grassroots organization looking to determine the feasibility of cityhood for the South Cobb community. I want to first thank Commissioner Cupid for her hard work and dedication to the South Cobb community. It is appreciated, and it doesn't go unnoticed. I want to thank Chairman Boyce for his forward thinking and thoughtfulness in regards to this budget and introduction of the 1.7 millage increase. As a business owner, I understand the importance of budgets, forecasting, and projecting for the future. I also understand the importance of investing into our future. What I like most about the budget is the fact that it is restorative in nature. This budget doesn't just plan for next year, but it creates a plan to ensure our AAA rating, restore many of Cobb County services, as well as meet long overdue capital needs within our police fleet. I have listened to a few of our fellow residents who are opposed to the millage increase and believe our, that believe our 30 million shortfall can be covered with the taxes we are projected to bring in. And while that may be plausible, it still doesn't address the future needs of our county as outlined in the Restored to Budget. We need new cars within our police fleet and body cameras. We need to maintain our AAA credit rating. We need our regional library hours restored, especially in South Cobb. So thank you again, Chairman Boyce, for addressing the critical needs of our county, thus creating this thoughtful and restorative budget and millage increase of 1.7. I want to urge every commissioner here to vote in favor of the 1.7-mill increase to ensure we grow, we continue to grow, flourish, and restore the quality of life we have grown accustomed to here in Cobb County. We must invest in our future health and vitality of this county. Thank you.
A few of you guys know me. First off, my hat's off to you guys. I wouldn't wish a job on anybody. Nobody wants to pay taxes, and nobody wants to hit a pothole. The issue of raising millage rate is an issue that we can't avoid. It's a matter of how much. As a business owner, I don't pay taxes. My clients pay taxes. If you raise my millage rate on my commercial property, I raise my prices. So that's one thing that we've got to look at in economic issue. That's what all the business people do. I pay my bills. I think the Braves ought to pay their bill. I think that we may need to look at a few user issues economically. We, being on the Animal Control Board, we presented at one point a licensing fee that would raise about a million dollars, oh, close to a million dollars the first year. So an issue we ought to look into, user fees. Park user fees, the state of Georgia was going to close down parks, but decided to go to user fees. $2 parking fee, $5 parking fee. The people who use these parks pay for that so that the people who don't use the parks, such as myself, I don't use, but I pay a lot of land tax on commercial property, residential, rental property, as well as business license tax. So we may want to look at some other issues. I just want to say, maybe we want to look at a maybe smaller increase and then look at some other ways of revenue because... at some other ways of revenue, because raising the millage rate, we are already paying the lowest tax. We've got 60% residents, 40% of the residents in Cobb County don't own their own homes. So when you look at those 40%, their rent's going to go up soon as the millage rate goes up. The businesses, every penny that goes up on their cost is reflected to the consumer. So that's something that we may look at in regards to encouraging new businesses to come in. Most of the businesses that come into Cobb County come because we have a strong economy in Cobb County, and we're already the lowest in the metro area. So I'm not for the miller trade or against it either way. I'm for us looking at some other ways to raise revenues, so that y'all's job isn't quite as hard as everybody makes it. So thanks for what you do, and good luck.
My name is Ron Mitchell. I'm a resident of Cobb. I was sent here in 1973, and came back in in '86 for a total of 28 years. So I know a little bit about the Cobb County. And none of us want to pay any more taxes than we absolutely need to. But my comment is on Cobb Ward fiscal responsibility. We understand that Bray Stadium was not our choice. We didn't vote for it, and I testified so in 2015. Records show that very, very few municipalities gain from a stadium other than, we have one. But it's a commitment. We have to pay the bill, I understand that. And then certainly after the base thing, we find library hours cut, park maintenance cut, road repair cut. And this is something your constituents, of course, notice. And now we have threats of park closing due to lack of funds. True or not, but that's what people believe. We've got to have the money for the parks. And then you close the existing functioning library on Lower Roswell to build a Sewell Mill Library and Culture Center. It comes to complete with meeting rooms, teen rooms, computer room, a recording studio, art gallery, art classrooms with lots of ceramic turntables and ovens, an amphitheater, and a black box theater, whatever the hell it is. And it's free! So says the statements in the magazines. Oh, and there's a library, too. So is this in the county constitution? I don't see it. Perhaps you can show me, point it to me. That'd be great. But we didn't vote for it either, and we got it. Now, we recognize it was built with free money, that's the splosh. But the general fund has to pay for lots of stuff, like we have to support the staff there, we have to pay for the maintenance and utilities. That ain't free. That ain't free. The general fund pays for that. So we must again support what we didn't ask for, vote for, nor want, for that matter. So what else must we support that taxpayers didn't ask for? We had some people address some issues there early this evening. We fully understand the desire to provide more services for our residents, who will kind of expect them to continue, of course, and probably more. Why wouldn't they keep asking if you're going to keep providing for it? If you're going to keep doing that. We also fully understand, within previous town hall meetings, obvious plans to support the increase, we're lobbying for it. We do not want, we do not understand why you want us to pay what we don't want nor need, and support fiscal irresponsibility to your constituents, and we told our commissioners so. Thank you.
My name is Chick Antswanett Reed, and I am a parent of the YELLS, the Youth Empowerment through Learning and Leading and Serving. And I'm just here to tell my story, just about, you know, how it just pretty much helped my daughter and I. We came out of homelessness, and we just didn't have anywhere to go. And finally, we received an apartment, and pretty much YELLS was the one. They helped us with aftercare for me, for my daughter, and it's just really helped her as a young lady to grow. And we just would like for you, and just really do appreciate all that you are doing. But we also just would like for you, you know, if it is an increase, we'd just like for you to keep, you know, the nonprofit for the Franklin Road community, because it really is helping our children, and it's helping our children to grow into young people. And we definitely need that in our lives, in this day and time. And so we just thank you so much for everything that you all are doing. Have a good night.
My name is Ofelia Nunez, and I am with the Boys and Girls Clubs in Cobb County. Our Boys and Girls Clubs in Cobb serve over 1,400 kids daily, in the South Cobb Recreation Center, Ostel in Mableton. And we really appreciate the longstanding support that we have received from you, from our commissioners. You can feel proud in knowing that your funds have provided the children and youth in Cobb County with engaging programs and environment that prepare and inspire them to achieve great futures. So your work is really, really achieving the purpose of making Cobb County excellent. The children in our clubs are living healthier lives, learning and improving academically, and going on to post-secondary education, going on to college. I would like to close with respectfully requesting that you approve the millage increase, and also continue funding of our nonprofit grants. Thank you, and I appreciate everything that you do for our county.
I'm Reverend Nancy Arnell. I am the President and CEO of Food Security for America. We run programs in your district, Mr. Weatherford, and your district, Ms. Cupid, and four of our Board of Directors are live in your district, Mr. Ott. I have a 20-year experience in nonprofits, up until three years ago in Fulton County in Atlanta. Having moved to Cobb, I was introduced to the process of the nonprofit grant. I am impressed. You have instituted a wonderful, fair, objective, practical, professional, extremely detailed way to help nonprofits help others. Don't let anybody tell you this is not a great process. It has taken years to get it to this fine-tuned point. If you drop that egg and crack that shell, you can't put it back again in a couple of years. This is a treasure you should be willing to support. I would also like to say a little bit of an old-fashioned thing. We used to say, pray for our public officials. I do sincerely pray that you all have the wisdom, the discernment, the courage, and the compassion to do what you think is right as you see what is right. And so I'm not going to call for a millage, a budget, this, that's your professional job, and it's a very difficult one. I am going to ask that you restore an additional $250,000 to the nonprofit grant that was there before the recession, to bring us back up to full speed. One tiny, tiny little figure. For every dollar we get, we bring in nine additional dollars' worth of food. Nine additional dollars' worth of food to hungry children, hungry parents, students trying to get a degree so they can do better, families trying to get back on their feet again if life gets tough. I could say more, but I think that probably says it. Thank you all.
Abby Schiffman, resident of East Cobb. Just want to make some corrections on some things some people said earlier. The libraries do already charge for the utilization of our community rooms. We're going into our second year of this change, of this charge. So just wanted to correct that on some things somebody had said earlier. The libraries have been told to make cuts and cuts and cuts throughout the past 10 years. We have decreased hours. It was open over 1,000 hours per week throughout the system, and we're now down to a little more than 700 hours per week. We have had state cuts, decreased our materials budget from the state, and if this 1.7 millage rate is not passed, we may be asked to make even more cuts. If the libraries are asked to make more cuts, then we may lose all of our state funding, and with that, some staffing positions, as well as funding for programs, and we may lose all of our materials budget. In regards to somebody who mentioned the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Arts Center, a lot of that was with state funding. And it was with a grant from the state that they were able to build that, and that facility is, was, the original East Cobb Library, was older than I am. So it was very antiquated, and so they joined with parks to make a newer facility. Other counties have been increasing and returning their services to pre-recession. Yes, desired services, according to some, but necessary services to others. I would love for Cobb to do the same. I would love for our services, such as libraries, to return to pre-recession hours and staffing. I would love for the students of Cobb County School System and Marietta School Systems to be able to utilize the libraries later in the evening than they do now because of the hours that have had to been cut, as well as on the weekends. So I hope you will write your commissioners, call your commissioners, and I hope you will look at everybody who has sent you information and what their desires are, and you will vote accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, see no more speakers. Oops, I'm sorry.
Fran Mitchell. I've lived in Cobb County seven years the first time, and I'm 32 years this time, so it's 39 years for me. We used to be a fiscally responsible county, and I really feel that there are places that you all could cut. And yes, I hear about the charities, the organizations. Now, I have some favorite charities. I have Homes for Heroes, I think is really important. The Battered Women Shelter is really important. There are a lot of charities that I like to give to, and I give to, and I'm sure if we made some of these known to the public, they would probably just as well donate. Churches do a lot. Maybe it's time to let the churches do more. Another thing is, I talk about tax abatements every time I come to these meetings. I hadn't seen anything done about these tax abatements. We give a lot of tax abatements, and I think it's time to start thinking about giving back to the taxpayer. You guys have deep pockets. You can go into the taxpayer's pocket and just keep taking and taking and taking. And you're not cutting, and I would like to see some cuts before you actually decide to raise this millage rate. If you need to raise it, raise it, less than one point. But really, guys, I have not seen the cuts. Mike, you didn't show the cuts? You just say, this is where we're going to restore everything back to. Well, it's time to start working for the taxpayers and not for yourselves. I didn't ask for the Cobb, for the Braves to come in. They're here, got to deal with it, but we'll probably never make a profit from it. And it's just, and the transit bill is coming next year, folks, so you're going to be asked to start paying a one-cent sales tax on transit. So let's just start looking at what the taxpayers are paying and start cutting back. Please do this. Let's make us fiscally responsible again. Thank you.
My name is Sabrina Jerome. I am a part of Franklin Community, and I am an achievement club member of YELLS. I understand the possibility of increasing tax, but it would also help to understand what it's going to do. YELLS had, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. YELLS has helped me and my family, which is two boys, when I was at my lowest point. And that nonprofit organization helped me with my kids as far as growth and school for my kids. Like, if I'm working, there's no way I would be able to support my boys or to help with the after-school program where you have to pay for it. So YELLS come in as a free program for me and my kids, and it gives me the opportunity to work as a single mom. And that was the greatest thing for me, to help my kids for homeworks and for me to be able to work and pay my taxes. So I understand the possibility of increasing the tax, but I also support the nonprofits as YELLS, because they need that money to help us as a community grow. So I thank you for what you've done in the past, and I thank everybody from YELLS for helping me and my family grow. Thank you. Have a good one.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Peggy Williams. I've been here before, and I spoke about the library several months ago. I just have one brief snapshot, because everybody's given statistics to you in this meeting and several over the last couple of months. I'm over 62 and have lived in my house since 1987. I benefit from the floating homestead exemption and benefit from the not having to pay the school tax because of my age. Increases will not affect me that much. There will be minor increases for me because of those two factors. But in comparison, my personal tax is under $1,000, but I have an 85-year-old friend who lives in Fulton. This is just a reality check. Her house has two fewer bedrooms than mine does, and her taxes are nearly $3,000. This is a reality check. We really have a good deal living in Cobb, and I think we should appreciate what we have and be able to pay for it.
My name is Beth Mitchell, and I'm here because I'm in support of a lot of things, but my daughter is part of the 4H Cobb Extension Program, and without it, she probably wouldn't have grown as much as she has. And I apologize, but this is very emotional, because without that program, lots of kids would be without a safe place to grow and develop. They go into the schools, they go into the communities, they work with the master gardeners, they work at the libraries to put on free programs in the summers. So there's lots of things that would be lost without the extension, and I just want you all to consider all of that. There's lots of people talking about all the great things that could or could not happen with the millage increase, but you have to stop and think what is best for most people, not just one or two or a handful, but we have to look at the whole situation. And I just hope that you're able to balance the budget to save as many programs as possible. Thank you.
I'm Chris Benson. I was last here about a year ago when you guys unanimously passed the Tethering Law, and I was so proud of our Board of Commissioners for doing what they did. I just wanted to, I'm actually not advocating either for or against millage in this case, but I would like to say that after the amazing progress that you guys made, I became aware recently that animal services might be in jeopardy in terms of budgetary issues, and I just wanted to urge you and I just wanted to urge you, whichever way you go, not to, that's a relatively small budget compared to all the, uh, the millions of dollars we put into so many programs here and yet it's the only one that directly results in the death of, of innocence if we don't do that. So wherever you end up on, on the budget and whether or not you put the millage rate in or not, I would ask that you, uh, leave that in place because, uh, to reduce that would simply result in more deaths of dogs and cats that we are trying so hard to make part of our community here. And thank you very much.
My name is Melissa Wilson. I'm here representing, um, the YELLS After School Program. Um, first I want to say thank you guys for your time because I know it's getting late. Um, the one thing I would like to say is, I don't know about statistics or anything like that, um, I only speak about life experiences. And what I can share with you is the importance of nonprofit. Um, who you see standing in front of you today is a college mom. I'm going for my bachelor's and without the help of YELLS and other nonprofit organizations, I wouldn't be able to do that. So whatever, however you guys have to decide these decisions, you know, congratulations on that. But thank you so much for all of the funding that you have put into nonprofits since. And we're also having really quick a back-to-school bash on Saturday, um, from 10 to 2. So we invite you all to come out. Have a good night.
Is this, I think she's going, is she coming up? Okay, good.
Hi, my name is Linda Lucas.
I've lived here for almost 40 years in Cobb County. I'm against the tax increase because I think that there are plenty of programs that can
I'm from North Cobb. And I mean, I'm hearing from all these people how good the nonprofit programs have been
be cut. They're being underused by, uh, wide margin, uh, such as the Cobb County Transit.
as an influence in their lives.
I don't know that I've ever seen a bus that was full.
And I have, um, heard from one person who follows all these things and is very knowledgeable
There's a whole lot of money wasted on that. Also, these, uh, roundabouts that are going in all over the county, that's over a million
about, um, the budget and how Cobb County works, that they're, within the, um, contract
dollars each. They are very pretty, but they confuse a lot of drivers.
with the Braves Stadium, Cobb County is entitled to three days a year to use that stadium.
Though, well, they actually do, people tell me that. And I wonder how many accidents they've caused.
I can't understand why you can't think outside the box.
So I'm just asking you to look at some other options, do your job, look at some things
Have three fundraisers staffed by volunteers from Cobb County.
that you can cut instead of, uh, thinking of the people, taxpayers of Cobb County as
You can make a couple of hundred thousand dollars to fund these people and not put your
a cash cow. Thank you.
Commissioners and chairmans, uh, my name is Joe Webb and, uh, I oppose the tax
hand in the taxpayer's pocket. And I'm asking you to think outside the box and doing so, you have the intelligence to please everybody. So that's all I'm asking.
increase.
Thank you.
Uh, every time I pick up the paper, I go nuts because I was reading today, y'all are
Okay.
proposing new programs to figure out how to build a homeless camp. Uh, and I got to reading the article and says, "Well, for three months, you can probably project a state there." And they're gonna also build it close to libraries so you'll have internet, so at least you'll have public restrooms. So I'm glad your, your library people are looking out for the homeless. Uh, the other thing is, uh, we, we are, we've reached a point that, uh, you go back to 2007, the area where the Cobb County was, uh, the Braves Stadium, that was the, called the Platinum Triangle. It was projected to grow exponentially just from natural growth of people wanting to move into Cobb County because it's such a great place to live and work. Uh, the recession killed that. Well, we did a lot of crony giveaways and we built, we, we started building up an area that all we've got to do is allow people to move in here and work with the companies to, to, uh, increase the, uh, our education system where we provide education to people that we can have qualified workers in place. So I applaud our school system. I believe right now that there's some cuts that can be made. Again, we, tonight, we've mentioned the abatements, that's one pet peeve of mine. And other than that, uh, I know y'all are doing a commendable day-by-day job. Uh, the police officers in this county are the best, they're, best there are. I pray for them every day and I tell them that and they tell me they appreciate it. And so that's what everybody needs to do when you see a police officer, tell them how much you appreciate them and how you can sleep better at night. Like I kid them, I tell them, "I sleep better at night and I slow down during the day." So they're doing a great job, so appreciate y'all.
Good evening, I'm Dave McDaniel. I live in Mableton for the last 39 years in the same house. I'm really happy with my homestead exemption. I'm over 62, I'm over 65, so I'm not paying the school tax either. But, uh, you know, you, you just, I'm having a little deja vu here from last year this time. I, I'm afraid that the same thing's gonna happen that happened last year. And I don't think that's right and I just want to come up here and say so. I think y'all need to think about what we're doing and our quality of life. And the fact that we pay less property taxes in Cobb County than anywhere else in metro Atlanta, okay, so what? As long as we've got a quality of life, then that's what we should be proud of. So I'm, I would stand here in favor of a millage increase, whatever is the right number. Thank you.
How do you do? Uh, my name is Janet Peters. I'm a little nervous, I always am when I'm speaking to an audience or especially on television. However, um, I do want to express that I am against the millage increase as it's been proposed. Uh, I have been a taxpayer and a homeowner since 1984 in Cobb County. I am here from the north. I was thrilled with the taxes when I came down here, just to compare what I left from. But, um, taxes have gone up and I do feel that there is ways of cutting that have maybe not been looked into or explored more thoroughly. Um, increasing, uh, citizens, building new buildings, bringing in new companies is a double-edged sword. There's an increase in your property values, that's great, but that should come in with an increase in your tax revenues, which is another benefit. Um, combined with the spending, I don't understand why it's so necessary that the 1.7 is so high. Now, I mentioned the double-edged sword. The more people that come in and have, and make good salaries are paying more taxes, but they need more services. So you have a balancing act between what is needed for new, uh, increase in population and what revenue they're bringing. I would like to have this proposal maybe postponed until it can be more thoroughly looked into. Thank you very much.
Okay, last call here for public comment on the proposed tax increase as defined by Georgia law. Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed and we're gonna take a 10-minute recess and we'll return. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Thought you wanted to do it at the end.
Yeah, we're doing the budget now. I just, um, all right, I'll wait till the budget, because I just wasn't here the last time, so I wanted to make sure people knew where I was. But I can wait. I know.
Yeah, well, I, we just do, we'll have the comments after we do both the public hearings because, anyway, we'll do a 10-minute recess till 8 o'clock and so we're in recess. Okay, we're back and now, um, we're now gonna conduct the second public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. Again, the same, uh, ground rules, unlimited speakers, three minutes. And, uh, if you want to talk about the tax increase like we did on the first hour and a half, not gonna stop you, but you're just diluting your message as we gotta be focusing on the budget this time, all right? So that, uh, I now open up this hearing and so the first, first speaker, I invite them to the podium.
I'll do it again.
No problem. No problem.
Fran Mitchell, and like I said, East Cobb, 39 years. And, uh, I don't know that I made it clear about these charities that y'all pick. I have special ones and I believe you shouldn't be picking the charities for us taxpayers. And then I think you need to let people know about the watershed, you gotta talk to people about that, let people know how much that's going up and what it's gonna affect. And the transit that I know you're going to push after the budget is taken care of. It's time to let the people know what you're really up to. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I now declare this second public hearing closed on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget and, uh, I believe we have some comments from the commissioners. So Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep it quick because I know everyone wants to go home and watch the All-Star game. But, um, I just thought that since I wasn't able to be here last, last meeting, um, wanted to kind of cover a few things. Someone mentioned the golf course. About four years ago, the county tried to sell the golf course, no one would buy it. Um, part of the problem is that the county doesn't own the land. It is owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. The county only owns the operation. And what the commissioners did back then was they took a loan from the general fund, which has been paid back, to improve the golf course so that the county could find an operator who basically took over the operation of the golf course. And they used the proceeds from that to pay back the loan and now to maintain the golf course. So the golf course has been turned around from being a money loser to actually raising the money necessary to fund the operations. Second thing is the pension. About four years ago, um, well, longer than that, I lost my pension with, with my job at Delta as a result of bankruptcy. I am well aware of what happens with pensions. Four years ago, I identified the fact that the county needed to do something, made some proposals that were suggested by some of the, um, speakers. Unfortunately, um, there was not support at the time for the board and it needs to be addressed because as most people know, defined benefits plans do not work. However, with that said, the county has an obligation to the employees to honor the commitment that was made to the employees with the pension that has been in place while, when they got hired. Um, I'm gonna ask Bill to, uh, talk about, well, first off, before we talk about the, um, the general fund with the stadium, there's been a lot of comments about the Braves. One of the things that's in the, uh, budget, I don't know if it's on this slide, but if you look at the, um, the line item budget that we got tonight, it, it talks about stadium capital maintenance fund as being 2.5 million. Um, that is the total amount that goes towards capital maintenance. However, only half of it is paid for by the county. The other half is paid for by the Braves. So when you see it on the budget as an expenditure, it is the two, the full 2.5 million that goes into that capital maintenance fund. However, both parties, the, the Braves and the county, um, contribute to that. And one of the things that, um, I got agreed to back when the vote was taken was that the county's portion is capped at 35 million. Once the county puts 35 million in there, it doesn't matter how much money is spent on the capital maintenance of the stadium, the county does not go above 35 million. Um, and then transit. Transit is extremely expensive, expensive operation and this year, $3.9 million of additional subsidies from the general fund is required because of changes, um, in the way the, the federal grant dollars work. One of the things that is going on, um, one of the, I'm the liaison commissioner with DOT and I have asked them and they are actively, in addition to the transit study that's going on, looking at ways to get more folks into the buses. Because it, there's a certain number, just like on an airplane, just like a movie theater, just like a hotel, once that bus leaves the station, you can never recover that revenue. And so what I, I have DOT looking at is how do we get more people into those buses, um, whether it be combining routes, you know, if we have two buses going to AT Homes Transit Station at the same time and they're both half-full, well, then it makes sense to go down to one. But that takes time and there are also federal regulations that the county has to meet before you change bus routes. So just know that the, the county staff is, is working through that. Um, and finally, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, back in October, as part of the retreat, I made proposals for cuts. One of the ones that has been less than popular is animal control. But what I said was, it is a starting point. It is my belief that you start from cuts and then if there's things that most of you say we can't live without, well, then I'm gonna tell you how much it costs. So for example, animal control is two tenths of a mil. The proposal that I had in October had a half-mil tax increase. So if animal control is something that everybody wants to keep, then it goes to 0.7. But I just have a concern about going all the way to 1.7. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, did you want me to address the Braves?
Oh, that, I'm sorry. Um, the last thing that, um, I asked after, um, listening to the comments from the last time, one of the other things that I asked for when the stadium was voted on was that there are five different funding sources for the stadium and what I had asked and it was agreed upon was that before any of the ones that were impact or funded by businesses, that the general fund, which is funded by the taxpayers, be the first one to be reduced. And so I asked Bill to create a slide that would show, um, how the county has been honoring that and lowering the general fund portion that goes towards the stadium debt.
Yes, sir. So I just want to call your attention to the line that says general fund property taxes. You'll see it's 5.5 million dollars as the proposed budget for 18, for FY19. If you, anybody remembers the overall quick facts from the Braves, this was 6.4 million dollars. So we've already reduced this, um, and we've reduced this by the growth in the CSSD2, which is the Cumberland Special Service District. Their growth in digest has generated additional dollars, as Commissioner Ott said, which we would then use to reduce the general fund's portion. As a part of the proposed 19 budget as well, um, we always talk about the police overtime, which is roughly a million dollars for traffic control and, um, the chairman has asked that to be capped at $600,000 with half of it, half of the funding coming from the general fund and the other half coming from the hotel owner, hotel mo, hotel owners in the area. So these are ways that we've looked at making reductions to the general fund's obligation and we've done it through the growth in the area, specifically the Cumberland Special Service District, as well as the countywide hotel motel tax, which is again, coming in above and beyond projections.
And, and just to kind of add to that, if everyone remembers when it was first proposed, it was gonna be 8.6 million dollars from the general fund. And when savings came in because of the favorable bond rates, it was lower to the 6.4. And then as Bill said, you can see it's been now lower to the 5.5. And then the additional, um, revenue is coming from the, um, $3 hotel room tax.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of you that came out tonight and gave us some good ideas and some good suggestions and really, uh, spoke your mind and gave us, gave, we gave you a voice for us to take back some, um, comments and, and really some good points. Um, I appreciate the letter from the Cobb Association of Realtors. As a part of the proposed 19 budget as well, we always talk about the police overtime, which is roughly a million dollars for traffic control and the chairman has asked that to be capped at $600,000 with half of it, half of the funding coming from the general fund and the other half coming from the hotel owner, hotel, hotel owners in the area. So these are ways that we've looked at making reductions to the general fund's obligation and we've done it through the growth in the area, specifically the Cumberland Special Service District, as well as the countywide hotel motel tax, which is again, coming in above and beyond projections.
And, and just to kind of add to that, if everyone remembers when it was first proposed, it was going to be $8.6 million from the general fund and when savings came in because of the favorable bond rates, it was lowered to the 6.4 and then as Bill said, you can see it's been now lower to the 5.5 and then the additional revenues coming from the $3 hotel room tax.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of you that came out tonight and gave us some good ideas and some good suggestions and really spoke your mind and gave us, gave, we gave you a voice for us to take back some comments and, and really some good points. I appreciate the letter from the Cobb Association of Realtors. I think you've made some great strides here with everything that's been thrown out there and, and the chairman and I have had many conversations along with staff, finance, county No matter what we do or what we cut or close or, or do away with, we're not going to come up with a $30 million shortfall unless we pretty much close down county government and we can't do that. But I have said all along that the 1.7 mils is, I'm, we can't, I can't justify arbitrarily throwing out 1.7 when it has a lot of stuff that we're adding or restoring when we have a shortfall that we've, we've got to be conscious of first. So we are still looking at everything. I'm listening to constituents, I'm getting emails and phone calls, I'm keeping a tally of the ones in support and the ones opposed and it's very close right now. But I am listening and I'm reading everyone. My assistant is responding to most of them on my behalf, but I am reading everyone and I, I'm hearing you. So with that said, we are still looking at everything and I, I think a compromise is going to be the best solution and working hard to try to reduce the 1.7. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, sir. Wanted to go over a couple of things and clear up some facts and I'm sure you may would do that as well, but I did check with Finance Day and County Manager, et cetera, about purchasing limits. There was some talk in the paper about us funding a tent city and it was funded into the budget. Been assured by the chairman and by finance and the county manager that it's not a line item in the budget, that any expenditures that are not in this budget over $50,000 were required to come back to this board for approval. So no matter what it is, if it's not in the budget, over $50,000, which is discretion of the county manager, it will come back to us for approval. So there is no tent city in this particular budget as proposed by the chairman. Transit, a lot of, been said about transit and I agree, there's some issues that need to be there. We subsidize transit, we need to look at reroutes, we need to do things that make it more efficient such as possibly Uber, ride share, things of that nature. Flex bus, it's costing us $40 to $60 a passenger where we can get one to eight for possibly Uber, but these are things that are, we need to look at. Having said that, all of that is up in the air because of House Bill at 9:30. We don't know what's going to happen there. We have to meet with legislatures, we have to figure out where the, where we go from here as a county. So in order to do that, it's probably, it's necessary we continue doing what we're doing until we figure out what the new path is and whether or not the county approves a referendum to do a one cent sales tax for some form of transit. Having said that, I would recommend that the board approve the transit positions as requested by the chairman, but delay filling four or five of them until the transit study's complete. So I believe we can do that. Is that not right? We can approve them but not fill them?
That's correct, sir.
All right, and I believe those are the accountant, one, planner, communications, specialists and solution analysts and they're currently funded by grant as we speak anyway.
Yes, sir.
And we were trying to move that to the general fund if the budget passed, but if we don't fund them and allow the grant to continue, that gives us flexibility until all of us can meet with the legislatures and figure out what the.
Yes, sir. The proposal is to make them general fund supported. It'll remain in the transit fund, but general, it'll be subsidized by the general fund as the budget is proposed.
Okay.
It is currently funded by grants, but the proposal is to move them off the grant funding and general fund subsidy.
And my proposal is not to move them off the grant funding.
Understood, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's just my opinion, that's certainly your budget that our, this board's purview, but I think with the, the nature of this transit and how up in the air it is, I don't think that's, that's something that we need to, to include in there. And I believe someone mentioned that we had, this budget is paying for what we've already spent. This budget is not paying for what we already spent. We balanced the budget last year using one-time money of about 19 million and we came up with almost zero fund balance, did we not?
That's correct, sir. This, this millage rate and budget, the millage rate that we're setting is for fiscal year 18, but it's also the basis for the budget for 19. So you're correct and when we adopted the budget for FY18, we used 19.7 million dollars of one-time monies just to balance.
Right. So we're pretty much met our obligations and we financed what we say we're going to finance.
Yes, sir.
So we're not using this to balance 2018, but this is a bi-annual budget and we have to do 18 and 19 at the same time. And I believe, as I understand it and the chairman presented it, 1.1 is a continuation budget that keeps everything as it is and that takes that much to fund that because we don't have the one-time monies anymore available to us. And the 1.7 is proposed as a restorative budget, which gives everybody the five-year plan to get back to where we were pre-recession. And these are things that the chairman and I, as well as yourself and the county manager are working toward. I fully believe that somewhere between the 1.1 and the 1.7 is where we ought to be with some cuts and some things moving around. So I don't know where that is, that's why we have another week to work on it and we're continuing to work on it. Commissioner Broll, all of us have talked. So I can assure you, we're working on those things, but I think that everything that we've said and done and looked at, we've, we've uncovered everything for the last eight months and I appreciate all your hard work and all this board's hard work. It's been very hard, long and difficult and we too are getting tons of emails and phone calls and, you know, so far, most of mine are two to one in favor. So it's about to where it is. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford. Commissioner Cupid.
I appreciate everyone who's here today. I have thoroughly appreciated all the comments that have been shared with respect to our millage, with respect to everyone's heart towards Cobb County, with everyone's heart towards the prosperity of county, with everyone's heart towards the sustainability of Cobb County, with everyone's heart towards the future of Cobb County. And it makes my heart full that you would take time out of your day, you could be concerned about what's going on in, under the roof of your own home, but you're here today and that means something to me. I'm here and compelled to think that those of you who are here today are here because someone invested in you. And because someone invested in you, you care enough to invest in this process. And I believe because of the investments being made in Cobb, that no one had to worry about getting here on their own today. For anyone who drove here, they didn't have to pave the road to get here. For anyone that came into this building, they didn't have to worry about how the lights were going to come on today. For those who are viewing this at home, you didn't have to worry about how you're going to see this on TV or televised. It takes a lot of people to make this work. Takes a lot of investment to make this work. And I'm just, as much as my heart is full to hear the input of everyone here, I'm somewhat I'm saddened because we, I hear a sentiment in this room repeated over and over again that reflects that because you don't see something with your own eyes or because something may not be of significance to the value in your own home. That it must have no purpose or value or it's of limited, it's of limited purpose to the function of our community here in Cobb. I'm disheartened by the, the limited thought we have towards how the wondrous things that make life work and make this work. I'm disheartened by that. I'm disappointed. I've been serving, this is my sixth year. When I came on board Cobb County, I was told that the commissioners made a commitment to cut the millage a point two every year when the budget was cut in 2011. We didn't do that with the painstaking detail that was being made on how we arrived at this 1.7. We were just told our, this number, point two, cut point two. Nobody said, point two has going to be associated with this service, point two is going to have this impact. I don't know, I wasn't here and I don't know how painful it was to have to increase the millage the way that it was increased during the recession. But I do know that the arbitrariness of not tying that to direct services has caused people to believe that somehow there's an arbitrariness to us valuing the level of services that we're trying to preserve with this 1.7. The chairman went through a lot of work, paying for the sins perhaps of those in years prior. But I do know when we were cutting that millage, we didn't have this room filled with people even cheerleading us on. It was just business as usual. As we cut the millage and cut the millage, there was no regard for how the employees were going to continue to provide the same level of services that people expected here in Cobb. No consideration for that. There was no consideration for the degradation of services when everybody was excited about the brave stadium. We weren't even back to restoring things to the service levels that were around prior to the recession. I remember people of District Four coming to me and asking Commissioner Cupid, why didn't you ask for this? Why aren't you doing that? Why aren't you asking for this? And people would come and ask and we would ask for basic services, but we weren't back to pre-recession levels as far as the Cobb County services are concerned. But all of a sudden, we had the ability to fund a new stadium. I am not knocking the choice that me we made, but what I believe is that when we want to do something, when something really is of value to us up here, we will do it. We will do it. So I'm beginning to wonder what we really value up here. Come tired of, I'm really just, this, this whole process gets to be very frustrating to me year af, year after year. What, people say, where are the cuts? Drive through my district, see the grass that comes to your waist or your shoulders. Those are the cuts. Where are the cuts? The cuts are the children that have assignments or mothers like me when I finally pick up my children from school and I can't make it to the library on time. Where are the cuts? The cuts are in the promise of police vehicles that we had, we had promised to our officers and they haven't gotten them yet. Where are the cuts? The cuts are the body cameras that do not outfit all of our police officers. Where are the cuts? The cuts are in fleet that don't have the light, that when they presented their budget to us, they said that they were in the jeopardy of not even being able to renew certain licenses to run all their vehicles. Where are the cuts? The cuts are in senior buses that have, that we were told had holes in the bottom of some of them or senior vans. Where are the cuts? The cuts are in those who ride those empty buses that you can't see anybody in, who are there waiting in the dark, who walk a mile with their two children in tow at night without lights. Because sometimes our buses have, we just haven't even put the money into investing into our service enough for that bus to run regularly for there to even be reliability beyond 60% of the time. Where are the cuts? We feel them every day. The commissioners get calls because of the cuts every day. There were over 1.9 million, or 1.9 mils of services that were requested with this budget that will go unmet. There's 1.7 mils on the table and there was an additional 1.9 mils of services and requests. These were not fluff requests. These were unmet things that were being done year after year after year. People say, run Cobb County like a business. Who would work for a company that couldn't even promise you a raise when you busted your behind when you came to work? Who would work for that kind of company? Who would work for that company and have pride in the work that you do? These Cobb County employees work for that company. You're saying, cut, cut. I almost want to stand up. Cut, cut, cut. Because you've got, people here doing nothing but fluff. But when we were making cuts, they were the ones who were exhausting themselves to provide the same level of services that you expect, know, demand without any more being asked to turn straw into gold. And they do it with a smile on their face. They do it to the best of their ability, but it's not enough because I can't see what they do and what, and there must be somebody who's not doing enough. I'm frustrated as much as many other people are because we want to do the best that we can. And it's very difficult when you want to do your best and you have limited time, limited money and limited resources. And we can't even stand here and talk about Cobb County beyond the limited time that we have here on this earth. We are not just talking about Cobb County for the next five, 10 years, we're talking about Cobb County for the next two, five generations. But so many, so many of us can't see past our noses to see where is Cobb County going to be. Cobb County is changing. Cobb County has changed. This is not the same old sleepy town that some people remember of Cobb County. We are, we are becoming an urbanized county every day. We have a stadium now, we have to accept that. But what we don't want to accept is that it comes with a diversity of services and of clients and of needs and pressures on this county every day. And we continue to fall short in providing the basic things, the basic things that we've been overlooking year after year after year. I'm upset when we talk about, let's cut 1.7 mils. Because I have to think about, how are we going to continue to prove and provide the same level of service when we have employees leaving every day who know they are better and can do better somewhere else? You think you're going to get the same level of service at the same commitment level when you don't even pay them what they were worth from several years back? It don't work that way. Cobb County run like a business. What kind of business functions when you don't invest in it? I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm so frustrated by this process. We shouldn't be here, Cobb County. We shouldn't be here, Cobb County. People tell me, come up to me, what are you going to do about those poor people in your district, Commissioner Cupid, who can't pay? And my constituents call me and say, Lisa Cupid, we will pay for the services that we need. We will pay, we want the extra library hours. Oh, you can cut libraries. Proximity means something. Not everybody, even when you have a child, and I have a car, but when I have two children, driving 20 minutes to the closest library is not necessarily an option when I'm trying to juggle my life. And I feel bad for those that have much less. Proximity means something. Somebody said, well, what does Cobb County invest in? What does Cobb County mean? I prefer that we have a county where people say they don't just live here, where people don't just want to be here, but they enjoy it, they enjoy it. We are here to create a vibrant Cobb County. And I'm sorry, 1.7 mils is, as much as the chairman is providing, is not even going to get us there because there's 1.9 left out there and a lot that's not going on today. I'm going to leave it there, Chairman. I'm supportive of you. I don't think it gets us to where we really need to be, but it's, it's a sure heck of a far way that what we were doing, we were cutting point two mils every year. And it wasn't directly to the prosperity of this Cobb County.
Thank you. Thanks. I just want to make one admin note. Janet asked her, and I'd like to delay the process, the problem is, is that we have to have a millage rate approved by the meeting next, next week. We owe it, because if we don't approve a millage rate next week, then we can't collect taxes, so. And there are counties around us that have fooled around with this kind of process. We don't do that here in Cobb County. We do the right thing. Five of us up here were elected to lead and to make the hard calls and we're, we're going to do that next week because I believe that you're all here tonight because since Christmas time, if not earlier, we have sought your input. We have actively gone out and met with you and encouraged you to talk to us. We've engaged you in a conversation and that's called America. And this process works when you And this process works when you show us that you have some concerns or you support us. It makes us do our job better, and I've been telling every commissioner here that I'm flexible to a point, all right? But we are not, we're not done yet with this discussion among the five of us here. I've had, I met with every single person at this board again today about the budget. We hear you, but we also understand, like Commissioner Cupid says here, we want a county where we can safely work, live, play, and pursue our dreams. So with that, we're adjourned.